I'd like to call this meeting, the Board of Commissioners to order and Clerk would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here, Port Charlotte, Florida.
Commissioner Bailey.
I'm here in Inglewood, Florida.
Very good, all present. I'd like to ask Commissioner Lumberman to say the prayer tonight.
Heavenly Father, guide us as we go through the agenda and the decisions that we have to make tonight and help us to make good decisions in the things that we consider. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice- Born and unborn. Alrighty, I believe we have an addition to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would please add the agenda item, request regarding salary of APA or Assistant Prosecuting Attorney. And I would suggest that be placed at K1 dot 1. So it'd be first under new business. If we number that K1 dot 1, 1.1, then there'd be no need to renumber all
Okay.
items that follow.
We could do that. I was thinking we could even move it in front of your report.
You know, that does not hurt my feelings one little bit. That'd be just fine.
Without objection. And then, Tom, I believe you have some employees online. Maybe we could move that report up also?
I do. Yep, I have both my employees also online. So if we could do that, that'd be great.
Okay, great. So alrighty, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bunting.
Or-
Oh, is that you, Sam?
Yeah, support.
Support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Clerk would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Alright, very good. Then Matt, do we have anybody online to make a public comment that you've noticed?
The Health Department is here and with your indulgence, Commissioner, I'd like to speak during public comment. I know I told you last week I'd get myself on the agenda, but once again, time got away from me.
That's fine. I know you're very busy and take whatever time you feel you need.
Okay, thank you. I wouldn't be as kind of if I was you, so. So I am sharing my screen with you all and I just will read what's on the screen for people who don't, who can't see the screen. And all I want to do is just update everybody on the progress that's being made with getting immunizations out to the community. And these data are through yesterday. We had gotten into the jurisdiction, Clinton, Grasset and Montcom, 29,300 doses of COVID-19 vaccine. Almost all of that is Moderna. And healthcare and Health Department combined had given 27,729 doses. Almost all of it was going immediately into people. The difference between the two numbers is 1,576. And actually, the Health Department and the hospitals need to have at least about 3,000 second doses on hand for people who are coming next week and the week after for their second dose. So this actually tells me that people are getting vaccinated outside of the county. So we're actually a net importer of vaccinations. I think people are going to Lansing, Mount Pleasant, Grand Rapids and getting vaccinated there. The Health Department itself had received 10,700 doses. So a little bit less than half came to the Health Department. We gave ourselves 6,225 doses and we shared 3,675 with others like pharmacies, hospital partners, the National Guard, folks like that. I gave a report last week where I said this number was around 4,000. I corrected it based on updated information that I have. So at the Health Department, starting business on Tuesday, we had 800 doses on hand and we received today an additional 1,300. That's included in the total up here. And this week, we're going to be sharing again vaccine with Meyer, Kroger, the Sparrow campuses. And we're going to be doing a lot of second dose clinics ourselves to get people up to two doses. I think the next information's really interesting. Looking down at the bottom bullet point here, the people in the jurisdiction who need to be vaccinated immediately, that's 31,283 people. So we have given for first doses, not all doses, but first doses, 19,101. So that means our initiation rate, more than 61% of these eligibles have gotten their first dose. So that's really good. These are the most vulnerable people or they're first responders. It's not the whole population by any stretch. But these people need to be vaccinated immediately. We're more than halfway there. So I feel really good about that. As soon as this starts creeping up around 70 or 80%, they're going to open it up and start adding new people, making new people eligible. I've got a chart in front of you here. It's got two lines on it. The red line you see ascending is the percentage of people vaccinated. So it's just going up steadily, starting in December, anywhere between 5 and 10% a week, increasing up to 60% where we are now. The other line is in blue. For people who can't see the screen, it's a dog leg. And it's aligned with the right-hand axis, which is the number of doses per week. So it rises steadily. We started out getting less than 500 doses a week. In the middle of January, we peaked out. One week, we had 3,500 doses in one week. And it's kind of leveled off or even come down a little bit now. So we're just kind of bouncing around between 3,000, right around 3,000 doses a week. But we're still making steady progress, 5 or 10% a week toward our goal. On a call with the Department of Health and Human Services today, the Immunization Division said they don't know when this is going to increase. They just said it will, but they have not gotten clear guidance from the federal government of when it's going to open up. So we're just going to keep moving forward, you know, 3,000 doses a week. I think the next chart is really interesting. It's a map of mid-Michigan with the counties highlighted. In the middle in red are the three counties of the mid-Michigan District Health Department. And right in the middle is Grasset County. It has the number 179 sitting on top of it. This is a map of the doses per 1,000 that have been given, all doses combined, first and second doses. And so what does that 179 signify? Well, for the state as a whole, they've given 161 doses per thousand people. That's down here at the bottom, if you can see the chart, 161. So Grasset is actually doing better than the state average at 179. Our jurisdiction as a whole is 150, so we're trailing the state a little bit. Clinton County is at 155. Montcom is only at 125. So we're really focusing on trying to figure out what's going on in Montcom and increase that. But Grasset is doing really well, 179, beating the state average. And all around it, you know, we've got the neighboring counties' numbers there. So Ingham is 171. Saginaw is 169. Look at Midland, 210. They're doing really, really well, 33. So Grasset is doing better than Isabella. That's fantastic. Macosta, 151. And then Kent over there at 190. So Midland and Kent, there is this pattern where these, the big counties that have all these hospitals, they get a lot more doses in and they vaccinate more people and they bring people in from outside. So you get more people vaccinated there. Amazingly, Grasset is really holding its own and doing really, really well. And so I'll just keep updating these numbers for you. And I will take questions if you feel you have time or you have anything you'd like to ask.
Alright, thank you, Marcus. Great report. Any questions? Alrighty. Just tell everybody in your department, Marcus, they're doing a tremendous job. We really appreciate all the hard work they've been doing.
Okay, and thanks to the board in the county for the great work that you're doing.
Alrighty. Matt, anybody else online that you see? Public comments?
I see a few unfamiliar names, so I would just ask that if they're here for public comment, feel free to unmute yourself and make a comment.
Okay, if anybody would like to make a comment, just unmute yourself and make the comment. And if you're on a cell phone, I think it's like star six or something. Am I right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, I don't hear anybody. We have the consent calendar and board minutes, communications. Anybody have anything there they want to discuss? I'd entertain a motion then to approve all that.
So moved. Support.
Okay, I think moved by Commissioner Bunting, support by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll then.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Alrighty, then we're going to move to Prosecutor Cushion and Judge McDonald. You have the floor.
Thank you. Last time I was in front of the board, I was asking to increase the pay for the Assistant Prosecutor position because we simply weren't getting any applicants. The board was gracious enough to do that and set a new salary schedule that started at step one at 50,200 and topped out at step six at 62,700, which is $30.14 an hour. After that, I did have an opportunity to interview a young man who basically didn't have any criminal law experience, but he did have some civil experience that we thought we could probably train and work with. He was the only applicant that we had. And I did extend an offer to this individual, which she then declined. So we were back to not having any applicants for the position. Late last week, I was made aware that there's a candidate who expressed an interest. And quite frankly, I've tried to hire in the past and have not been successful in doing that. But circumstances have changed and I became aware that this applicant, which is somebody who was born and raised in Elma and is going to stay here and who I'm very familiar with her legal work, as is Judge McDonald, would be interested, but it would only be financially feasible if she could start at the top end of the pay scale. It would not be, she would not be able to do it at anything less. So I'm here basically with hat in hand, asking you to allow me to retain this person who would give some longevity to my office because she's not going anywhere. I've had that longevity with my other two assistants. One's been there 11 years and the other's been there 10 years because they are local. And I have not had that with hiring anybody from outside the area. The skills that this person would bring, I'm very familiar with her legal work, as is Judge McDonald. And it would be in Judge McDonald's court that we would be placing her. And that's why I asked Judge McDonald if he would be here to give his opinion as to the merits of this request, which I hope that you will consider because I really don't have any other options. And quite frankly, in the 24 years I've been hiring assistants, this one is the most qualified initially of any of the applicants that I've ever had. So I can't tell you how strongly I would urge you to allow me to retain this person and solidify my office, not just for now, but into the future.
And I'll be happy to follow up on that briefly. When Keith approached me and indicated that he was finally able to recruit this applicant and but had the salary step issue, I was thrilled on behalf of the court and the prosecutor's office and the county in general, quite frankly. I absolutely agree with Keith 100%. This applicant has far more experience than one would normally see in an Assistant Prosecutor position. And I think that experience and abilities and across civil and criminal law would make her well-suited for all the courts, including district, but circuit. She'll work in circuit court. She'd work in juvenile court as needed and has worked in all of those in different roles. And I think that merits in and of itself, being started at the top end of that scale at step six, which is an unusual request, but I think anybody with those skills and ability merit that consideration by the board. I'll just say that we can't have effective law enforcement, and I think Sheriff Morris will join me with this. We can't have effective law enforcement without an effective prosecutor's office and without an effective court system. And one begets the other, begets the other, and we work very closely together. And when one is struggling, one department, whether that's the Sheriff's Department or the prosecutor's office or the court, because of understaffing and inability to maintain, to attract and maintain competent staff, it does affect the other departments and it affects our, all of our overall productivity. And we have seen that over the last three months. Keith's office has done a yeoman's job with just the three of them covering three courts. And we've only been lucky in the sense that COVID has assisted in keeping those numbers down temporarily. And also, there's been the transition in circuit court because we're going, we have a new judge in Judge Slagel and there'll be soon another appointed new circuit judge to replace Judge Rick. So there's been a kind of a lull in the circuit court business that has allowed Keith and Jen to help in district court. But we can't keep it up for much longer and keep up the productivity. And the sheriff knows how that affects their department. And we know how the lack of staffing in the prosecutor's office affects the court. And we know how that all affects the county. So I think this is a great request on behalf of the prosecutor's office. It'll help law enforcement. It'll help the courts. And I believe it'll help the county and it'll certainly deliver the kind of quality legal representation and prosecutor experience and work that we're used to seeing from our prosecutor's office. So I would wholeheartedly endorse it.
Can I ask who you are looking at in hiring or hiring?
Can we do that in a public meeting?
Well, this-
I don't think we can do that, Jen, in a public meeting, can we? We'd have to go to a-
Okay, well, that's all right. I would make a motion that we allow them to hire this person. I was just curious who it was. But yes, I'll make a motion that we would hire.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bunting. Do we have a second?
I'd second that. And I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
I can't hear you.
Well, I'm doing the best I can. Y'all are from Florida.
But that's a little better.
That's better.
Go ahead, Sam. I had one question too.
I understand. I mean, I, we give you that range, Keith, and I understand that you've got somebody who experienced and you got to pay the price and that's not a problem at all with me. I just didn't know how like the next step, this step situation in your offices goes. Is the same as the employees? Is she employed kind of of the county then? Or is she, I mean, does she score into our step system or do you have your own step system up there with raises and stuff?
Well, she was, there's this six-step system. Obviously, she would be, if this was passed, she would already be at the top of that scale. The only raises that this person would get would be if the county gave a cost of living raise, for example. But there wouldn't be another step increase down the line because that would have been maxed out.
Yeah, that was my question too, Sam. So he answered mine.
Yeah, like I say, I, you got to pay for what you get and you think she's the one or this person's the one, that's the one we have to pay for. I think it's a great move. And I assume it'll take a little time to wind whatever they're doing down to come to your office.
Yes, I, this came to me late last week. I didn't want to put it off because this person is employed elsewhere. Obviously, is going to want to give notice. So we're going to be, whatever, if I could offer that position, I would do it tonight and see if it's two weeks or four weeks or whatever it is to wind up her current affairs.
That's great.
Alrighty, any other discussion or questions? Then if the clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate. We appreciate the board's consideration and thought and action here.
Alrighty. Then let's move on. We've moved up Tom's presentation from the Animal Control, since he's got some extra people online there.
Well, thank, thank you, guys. I greatly, greatly appreciate it. And yeah, I do. I have, I have both my employees online. We have Emily O'Boyle. Emily's an animal control officer here. She's been here for approximately 10 years now. And then we also do have Blair Woodgate. Blair's been here for about 18 months. And Blair just got married here a little while ago. So it, it's a nice addition to our, to our staff. But and then myself, just to give you a little background, I've been here for 25 years now, 18 years as Director for Animal Control. But I presented you guys with a five-year synopsis of what we, what we accomplished here. And does anybody have any questions about the report at all?
You mentioned the two additional staff. Everybody's full-time, Tom?
Correct. Everybody's here full-time and it's, it's a wonderful staff. We're doing a great job getting people in and out with COVID. And the public is doing a great job too with adhering to all COVID measures.
Okay, Jen, I think you had a question?
Yes, I did. I was looking at your numbers and I think it's great that we're not taking in a lot of animals. I've kind of figured it out that you're only taking in maybe five days a week, probably two to three animals a day. Is that about right?
Correct. And right now, too, we're only taking in strictly stray animals as well. With COVID, we've, we've shut down just so we don't have any, any problems with any, you know, with more people and that coming in. So we're just strictly taking in stray animals right now. At the beginning of the year, we did take in owner surrenders and that type of stuff. And so that's why, like, our cat numbers are up in that. But as far as right now, we're just strictly taking in stray animals.
This is from last year. So what have you taken in so far this year?
So far this year, we've taken in about three cats that were strays. And then we've also taken in roughly about 10 or 12 dogs. Currently, right now at the shelter, the two dogs that we did have in were reclaimed just a few minutes ago. So we actually don't have any animals in the shelter right now.
One of the, I think I brought this to your attention before, that I have people that complain that they, they have animals that are dropped off at their house and they can't bring them to you. I mean, they're not strays. Just that people don't want them, so they just drop them off out in the country.
Yeah, you know, if, if they would call us, we can, we can get them, you know, some help there possibly. But you know, that, there's, they're not supposed to be doing that, Jen. You know, if they, if you talk to those people, have them give us a call. We probably have some options for them as far as we can do a home-to-home type thing for them. We can also help them out with some food. We do have a food bank. And also, we do have some low-cost spaying and neutering options as well.
I know one person has got like, well, they have like two or three cats in their house that are their pets. But then they have another eight of them that they feed. I actually babysit once in a while for them. And I just go out and put food in their garage so they, I mean, they love animals and so do all of us. But we wondered, I mean, it's getting to the point where it's too many.
Yeah, we, we do have, we do have some great spay and neutering options and that. So, you know, we can, we can definitely help them out with that.
Okay.
Yeah, but some of the highlights though that, that we did is, so our highlights from 2020, our save rate increased 90, up to 98%. As you can see, it's, it's, you know, steadily inclined every year. It was 93% back in 2019, 89% in 18, 77 in 17, and then 75 in 16. So it's climbed up, you know, quite a bit here. This contributed several things. We took in fewer animals because of COVID. We no longer took in, yeah, we no longer took in owner surrendered animals for most of the year. We did a little bit in the winter, springtime, but the county was shut down for a couple of months to where we, we worked from home instead of regular office hours. We made arrangements with the public to come in and reclaim their animals and adopt them out. We also started a program called Home-to-Home. And what's, what's nice about that Home-to-Home feature is you could sit there, give us a picture of your animal with a brief description of it. The animal stays in its home environment. It has all the owner's information on it, you know, their phone number and contact and everything else. Then the potential adopter can go into their home and actually see how this animal interacts around a family and that type of stuff. So, you know, starting at home-to-home really, really helped us a lot. You know, that was, that was a great thing. That was a great feature. We also, the, we're taking into the limited amount of cats that we've taken in. And that really helped us out a lot. Cats, as you know, is the hardest thing to, to, for a shelter to get rid of. It is, especially in Grasset County, we're a rural farming community. Everybody has cats that, that they want. So we did a couple of different projects here. We, we go through GAIN and we also go through Spade Neuter Express and that. And we, we help out with, with like a third of the cost for animals to get fixed. It costs us roughly about $10 to $50 to get fixed. And as long as they, as long as they do that and it's strictly a feral cat, you know, it does quite a few things for us. Number one, they're, they're not populating with cats and kittens out there. And number two, we're not getting those cats and kittens into the county where the county then is responsible for them. So it really, really helps us out by doing that. We also did start a food bank where we have the Food Bank of Greater Lansing that comes in. They deliver food to us. Usually, it's twice a month. They deliver it in a big old tote. Usually, it's about 3,000 to 4,000 pounds.
Wow.
A post on our Facebook page. And as soon as we put the, the post on our Facebook page, we have people coming in and picking up food. You know, it could be cat food, it could be dog food, it could be cat litter. They've even had some toys in there, bird food and everything like that. So that, that's a great program that the Greater Lansing Food Bank has helped us out with. This year, we also applied for a grant. This was in 2020. We received a $5,000 grant from the state of Michigan. That was great and everything, but then unfortunately, COVID hit. So with everything being shut down and that, the, the program was, was geared toward our- So, with everything being shut down and that, the, the program was, was geared toward our veterans, veterans that are in the military. With not having so many animals in here, unfortunately, we, we didn't have that many veterans that could come in and adopt out animals, because they were also getting reclaimed a lot. So what we did is, we asked for an amendment to that state grant, and they allowed us to amend it, it took over on October 1st. With that, it allowed any resident, whether it was in Grashick County or not, to, when they adopted out an animal from us, that grant would pay for up to $100 toward their spaying and neutering, it was a perfect win-win for everybody. We were able to get 36 animals fixed, we had 32 cats and four dogs that were fixed, so that was a great, great program. Also too, in 2020, we did order some new kennels, we are in the process right now with building the grounds to help, helping us install those kennels. We went from three-by-four kennels to four-by-eight kennels, so we went basically from 12 square feet up to 32 square feet per animal, which is huge. These new kennels also are six-foot tall, they have a guillotine door in the back to where that animal could go inside and out whenever it wants. Right now, we don't have that cut into the wall, just because of the bitter cold out there and that, the cement and stuff wouldn't cure properly and stuff, so once the weather gets here, that, that will cooperate with us better, we'll get those holes cut, and that way then the animals can go back and forth through the doors on their own. And then also too, we, we've got a new truck ordered for animal control, the, the one that we're trading into building the grounds has 155,000 miles on it. They're in desperate need of a new truck, a newer truck, and so we're looking at getting that traded down to building the grounds whenever that happens. But also, we, we had a, a phenomenal volunteer program slated for this year as well. Just for the few months that we were open, we, we had 419 hours that was logged in for, for our volunteers. And they did everything like from painting, to walking animals, to grooming animals, giving them baths, planting flowers, sorting toys and linens, and that type of stuff. We also did have a volunteer that really helped Blair, especially on Saturdays, she was able to come in, help her computerize some of the animal slips, and creating a new database for us to use. In that way, you know, helps us track, track animals a lot easier and a lot better. We also did have, I don't know if you guys remember, like, when they weren't accepting pop cans and that, at, at a lot of the area grocery stores where they had that shut down. So we, we got inundated with a lot of pop cans, people were bringing us their pop cans for donations, so we did have a, one of our volunteers as well, once that finally opened back up to where, you know, they brought in a, took in a lot of pop cans for us, and we still have about six or seven bags that need to be brought in and cashed out, so when the, when we have another volunteer that comes in, when we start accepting them again, you know, we'll have them, we'll have them take it in and do that for us, but do you guys have any questions at all for us?
I do, have you taken in any other animals other than dogs and cats?
We have not, no, just, just strictly dogs and cats, we did have, we did have a couple pigs that we had to chase down, but we found their owners for them, so but other than that, that was, that was it, we just had a couple, couple little pigs in here, and that was, that was it that we've had this year.
Tom, I wonder if Emily and Blair might turn their video on, and just introduce themselves to the commissioners, I know one of our commissioners had not remembered meeting them, and hence my request that you bring them along tonight. Now, if they've stepped away from their computers for a moment, I'm, they're gonna be totally busted here, but Emily and Blair, can you show yourselves?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have them come over on mine real quick.
Oh, okay, okay, six feet apart, six feet apart. Okay, so who are we looking at, Emily, is that you?
It's on my memory, O'Boyle.
Okay, you're one of the animal control officers along with Tom, correct?
I am.
Yep, and you've been with the county for what, eight, nine, 10 years?
Close, close to 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, terrific, and Blair, where are you, gal? You recently be troughed, hey Blair, how long you been with the county now?
About 18 months.
Yep, you do a lot of programming specifically, don't you?
So I, I split my time between animal control life, so licenses, and taking care of the animals, and also getting fosters and shelters and transfers for the animals, the ones that we can't adopt out. And then I also split my time with grant writing, and working on a new grant to have a TNR program for satellite positions for all of our local, small local communities.
Remind folks what TNR is, please.
It's trap, neuter, release, so basically you trap a cat, and you get the surgery done for spay and neutering, so fixation, and then you release it back to the original community.
The colony, yeah, okay, and when I say to Tom, Tom, get that dog adopted, it's, you know, adorable, irresistible, he go, goes back to you, and you start hammering away on social media and getting on the phone, and you're the one that really helps to push that, aren't you?
Uh, yes, so I post, or we all post pictures when a dog comes, or any cat, or any animal comes in, and then after less than a week, I'm trying to get other fosters and other shelters to, okay, let's get this dog back to its home or into our home.
Yep, and finally Blair, we, we were able to get you in to introduce you to commissioners shortly after you began, weren't we? Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks, hey, so, so good to see you Blair, and congratulations on your recent nuptials.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thanks everybody, really appreciate that. Thanks Chuck, I appreciate it.
Yep. Tom, can you refresh my memory, what's your department budget approximately?
Our department budget is approximately $180,000.
$180, do, do you know what percentage you bring in in fees of that?
Roughly $90,000.
Okay, so about half?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you find that pretty much everybody gets licenses for their dogs, or is it because of the economy, do you find that some can't afford it?
You know, it, it, it's always, it's always ran still probably about 50/50 or so. Whenever we find an animal, like, if we have a complaint, or if we do find one that's running loose, and we do find the owner, you know, it's the first thing that we check. We do give them a 30-day notice to get a license on their dog if they do not have a license, but one of the things that we would, we were slated to do this year, was to do a, a dog census, we hadn't done one of those in a while. We do have some problem areas that we would like to hit, but as you know, with, with COVID, you know, we weren't able to do that this year, so with having our staff back up to full-time and that, that was one of the goals that we were hoping to do, but hopefully, this year, you know, if, if we get some lifts off and, and that, we can, we can go back and at least hit our problem areas.
Yes. Is that your office that you're at right now?
It is.
Oh, it looks really nice in the background there.
Well, well, thanks, it, I, I was hoping, I was hoping, we, we've been doing a lot of painting and, and remodeling and everything else, and, you know, these new cages that we have, we're gonna be really excited to show them off to the public once they're, once they're fully functional.
I don't see any dust on the, on the shelves back there, so that looks good.
I can tell you that.
Hey Jan? Jan?
Yes.
I was just wondering, if you have these people that are kind of housing dogs, maybe you could get with Tom and give them those names or something, and he could kind of help them along with putting them wherever they need to be?
It's, it's not dogs or cats, somebody, they keep dropping them off, they live out way, way out in the country, and they keep getting cats in their yard, they sit way back, and they got woods behind them, and they feed them, but it's just that they got so many, and they don't, you know, they try to get rid of them, and, but it's mostly cats. I think they have, they do have a dog, but they usually take the dog with them when I babysit for them, and I, I don't know if their dog is still alive, he was really sick, and they didn't think he was gonna live very long, but, no, it's just that they have a lot of cats, and they go that, and I've seen some on US 27 too, and I don't know if I'm supposed to stop and pick them up, I just hate to see that, you know, that's really sad when somebody throws them out on the highway there.
Yeah, we, you know, we do, we've got a lot of great programs out there where, where we could get them fixed for next to nothing, and so, you know, if, if you do, if you can, if you can get their name and number for me, I can give them a call, we can get them set up into a feral cat program.
I think they have called, yeah, I thought they called you, that's what they said, they called, they called out at the dog's place of the shelter, and, you know, I just tell them, well, maybe you had too many or something, I, I didn't know, so.
Yep, and right, and right now, we're not, we're not taking them in due to COVID, but as, as far as, as far as like feral or just outside cats, but, you know, if, if we can, if we get that phone number and stuff, we can definitely get them into some feral cat programs to where we can get them into a barn cat program, where we can at least get them fixed.
Yeah, okay.
Alrighty, any other questions?
Thanks Tom, you do a good job up there.
Thank you guys, I greatly appreciate it, and, and you know, for a, a smaller shelter to hit that 98% mark, is, it's pretty extraordinary, you know, for the save rate, and, you know, it, it's just amazing to hit, you know, we hit 93%, 89% the year before that, so you, you could see where it's, it's growing, and it's doing good, and, and that all comes down to having a good staff and, and trying some innovations.
Alrighty, thank you Tom, and I think we got everybody leaving, only having to stay an extra 12 minutes probably. Only 5:12. Alrighty. Okay, Tracy, I believe you have the floor. Administrator's report.
Sure, just two or three issues I thought I would update you on today, first of all, blight, this program is now underway. I provided a complaint form for the township's use, and talked with them about the, the process and the flow. We have already received one complaint, it's being reviewed, I don't know if it fits under the blight ordinance or not, so we're taking a look at that. But even if it doesn't fall under blight, and it falls under buildings, we, we might be able to help them out, so. My plan is to stop into meetings of the participating townships in the next month or two, just touch base, show my face, remind them that I'm interested to answer any questions they might have, so just to kind of help to encourage the beginning of this program. Next, received information just today that the State Court Administrator's Office has approved restarting jury trials, these had been discontinued during this COVID period. We're not, really haven't been in the business of bringing large numbers of people and packing them in rooms, this seems to be a bad idea. And resumption of trials has been tied to the numbers of COVID cases in the community, there's a formula for this, specifically, there, there has to be a seven-day average of less than 70 cases per million per day, or less than 10% of positive tests per day in the last seven days, so they, they've got a way of, of measuring this. Also, in consultation with the Health Department, must be some assurance that our existing health facilities can handle the treatment and care of any COVID cases that, that might come up in our community. So, numbers have leveled off enough for now to allow for jury trials to recommence. There are a few that are backed up in the queue, but they'll, they'll work through that, so, of course, in spite of this, vigilance and safe practices must continue. Just want to continue on the track that we're on now, so. Next, the clock tower, I don't know if you had noticed sometime back, but the thing wasn't chiming, and I don't know if you have noticed that now it is. There was just one little part in the clock, the clock mechanism that had broken, and it was, that part was not readily available. Add to that, that people who know how to work with these clocks and these towers are fading away, I'm told, you know what fading away means. Tony Miller, who is forever a magician and helping us, he contacted a young fellow who has quite a lot of talent with, among other things, fabrication and welding fabrication. Tony took him to the tower, the fellow figured out what we needed, he created it, they popped it in, and now the, the tower is chiming once again, so I plan to draft a letter of thanks to this young man, and note too, that these are the sorts of contacts that Tony Miller is able to bring to us in his service, he's just a wonderful fellow, and I, I also am struck by the, the amount of ingenuity and talent we have, you know, right here in Grashick County, it forever impresses me. So, that would appear to be the administrator's report for this evening, Chris will be talking with you in a little bit, he'll perhaps talk to you about the late stages of the audit, but he can address the financial world, so that's what I have for this evening.
Alrighty, any questions for Tracy?
Hey Tracy, just, on the jury trials, did, did they have a few based on this policy, or we just didn't have any, or I mean, doesn't everybody have that kind of right to do that or something?
They do, there are certain provisions that if there is an order under, and I can't tell you what the authority is, but our court takes, and all courts in the state, take their, their directions from the Chief Judge of the Supreme, State Supreme Court, as communicated through the State Court Administrator's Office. So it was an order that came down from the Chief Judge that allowed these, allowed the trials to be held in abeyance, and then allows them to commence.
I see.
But, but yeah, I mean, you, you correctly point out to the constitutional imperative here for getting these cases tried, more in the criminal area than in the civil area, but, but yeah, there is authority, and a public health situation is one such reason for allowing these things to be held in abeyance.
Alrighty, anyone, anything else? Thank you Tracy, move on to Commissioner's report, Jan, you have anything?
Yes, I had a meeting last week with Mr. Michigan Works, and I actually have a meeting tomorrow with them too, we're working on, it's, this, the end of this year, there'll be a new contract every so many years, so that's what we're working on, and then MMR, I had a meeting last week. Mr. Bailey, you forgot to be on that one. I can't hear you.
I'm sorry Jan, I didn't make it, I was busy.
That's all right, we figure you were in the sun, but anyway, we had one with mobile medical response, I have all the information on that, I'll get that to our clerk, so at the next meeting, you guys will have a record of it. The response times are down, what had happened is when this, when this virus first started, you know, everybody was told, don't go, don't go to the hospital, and so they, the runs were really low, they didn't have a lot of runs, but then, all of a sudden, you had people that, that kind of went the other way, and between the people with the virus, and then people that have been under a lot of stress with heart attacks, and, and, you know, just not feeling good. And then we also have a lot of problems with the drugs in the community, a lot of people are not working, so the, the ambulances have been very busy, and so this last time, I believe it was down, it was, for the first time, it was under 1%, which is not a lot, they went from doing 30, 40 calls a month to over 100 calls a month. So I'm gonna get that around, and I will get that to our clerk, and we just had a meeting Thursday. Other than that, that was it.
Alrighty, thanks Jan, I'll do the rotation in the screens here, Sam? Did you have anything?
We can't hear you.
Here we go, yeah, we, we met this morning, Greater Grash Development with a, on a piece of property in Breckenridge for the, kind of just lost what it's called.
Brownfield, Brownfield redevelopment.
Morning, we had met this morning, and they're gonna, they've approved a 220 East Saginaw Street in Breckenridge to be a brownfield development project for, in Breckenridge, and we're gonna hear more about that, it'll come to us in probably a month, but they've got to pass it through a couple other places, but it's gonna be a great But it's going to be a great project for the city of Brecken, or the village of Breckenridge. That's all I had.
Alrighty, thank you, Sam. Uh, Commissioner Lumberman?
Um, I don't have anything to report from the, uh, Elma City meetings. And, uh, Arcaded Township had to reschedule due to, uh, Zoom difficulties and I missed the rescheduled meeting. So I really don't have anything to report.
Alrighty, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Bailey?
Uh, yeah, you and I had a health board meeting.
Yeah.
And it was an organizational meeting and really Marcus filled us in tonight on what's going on. So not much more to report.
Alrighty, thanks. And, uh, the only thing I had, uh, Pine River Township meeting, they were just doing regular business. And Seville had a meeting, but I couldn't find the link. So, technology. Alrighty, let's move on. Um, new business, we did animal control, uh, the marriage retirement plan.
Hi. Me.
Well, hi.
Hi. Um, so I did submit a memo, um, about our MERS, um, adoption of the agreement addendums. So right off the beginning, I will ask, do you, does anybody have any questions based on that memo? If not, I will go through the memo.
What?
Okay, so MERS, it, MERS is the retirement, um, plan that we use for all municipal employees. So what they have done is they have completed an internal update of the retirement system. And this allows for more flexibility and decision, decision-making for municipalities. Um, ultimately, it's going to lead to very little, very few changes for us based on our current practices, but it does give us some flexibility into the future. MERS is requiring, um, that we talk about this and that everything be established in the minutes in order to put this addendum into place. Um, MERS does not have intentions of sending one of these out again. It will be a one-time thing, but then we're, we are able to make adjustments as needed. And so the first thing that we are going to talk about is service credit. Service credit is, um, specifically for a defined benefit person. This is somebody that has started working here before two thousand and five. We have twenty-seven employees that are currently enrolled in the defined benefit program. We need to clarify a minimum number of hours that an employee works in a month to receive credit. There is not currently a minimum for this, so this is a new option. But we do not currently have any employees that are working part-time that are part of this defined benefit. But we do need to have something in place in case there were something that would come up into the future. Um, so we had decided, um, or suggested that this be a forty hours per month. That is an average of ten hours per week in order to receive service credit. Um, that's going to be five hundred and twenty hours for the, for the calendar year.
Let's go through them all, Sheila. And, uh, they can ask questions as we go. Um, but remember on that number, it's a minimum number. Um, uh, service credits will be given to anyone who works over the, the ten-hour minimum.
Correct. Okay, so then the next thing is also for defined benefits. So it's also the people that were hired before two thousand and five. And this is for leaves of absence. Currently, if somebody is out on a leave of absence, whether that's short disability, long-term disability, an administrative leave, they are receiving, they are being granted service credit for that time that they are out. Um, and so we do have the option to offer that service credit. But I'm going to go through an example of what it looks like if we do grant service credit. So if you do look at the second page of your memo, it's just a little breakdown of what that looks like. So, in this example, in, in the example, Sherlock is going to be out of work for three months. And most, most times, I missed something. Hold on just a second. So when, if we were to grant service credit when they are on leave, they are going to be required to pay back their contribution that was owed during the time that they worked out. So in this example, this person was out for three months. If they are a part of the G E L C or the T P O M A, uh, T P O A M, they are required to contribute two-point-six percent. P O A M has no requirement for contribution. So the repayment in this is likely to be very small. So in this example, Sherlock missed forty hours because we've established that that's what the forty, the, that the max, the minimum is for the month. Um, his hourly wage is going to be ten hours, ten dollars per hour. His contribution is going to be two-point-six. So ultimately, he, when he comes back at the end of that three months, he is going to owe thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents to MERS. Now, since he was out for three months, we're able to multiply that out by three, multiply it by three. So he's got nine months to repay this. So ultimately, that's going to be eighteen pay periods. So we would deduct one dollar and seventy-three cents per pay for him to pay this amount back in order for him to still get service credit for those three months.
Again, Sheila, we, again, Sheila, we currently do or do not award service credit when folks are on these kinds of leaves?
We do.
Okay.
It does not matter, it does not matter the leave, they are getting service credit.
We just don't require the payback, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Go on.
That is what would change. If we exclude service credit, then they would not be granted any service credit, which this could ultimately affect their retirement payout in the end. So if they were off for six months, then that would be six months less that would be factored in, in their ultimate payout at retirement.
Good, thanks.
Okay. I know that one was a lot. So if you have any questions, please ask. Um, so the next thing is defining MERS eligibility. This is going to be for all plans. Um, we currently allow all employees except temporary, limited part-time and seasonal employees to participate in MERS contributions. I am recommending that we keep our policy the same. Temporary, limited, part-time and seasonal employees do not reach the level of becoming vested. Therefore, it does not make sense to enroll them into a defined contribution plan. They will still have the ability to participate in our four fifty-seven.
Go on.
Um, probationary period, this is going to be for all plans. For our current contract in the county policy, we have a probationary period that allows for separation for a deci- a defined period. For example, if the employee cannot learn their job. But we do not have a probationary period when it comes to any fringe benefits. With this new system, we do have the ability to impose a probationary period in one-month increments with no, lasting no longer than twelve months. During this probationary period, contributions would not be reported to, and service would not be, and service would not begin until the probationary period has ended. Based on our union contract and county policy, we have a five-year full vesting schedule, and I recommend that we do not make any changes to this.
So the probationary period would, um, only be for the beginning of benefits, the MERS benefit. Um, and at present, we, we allow, uh, participation from day one of employment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, um, you're thinking that it might be best just to keep it that way, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, um, I think you and I discussed that if that was to be changed, I really do think we'd have to approach the unions about negotiating that.
I believe so too, based on the, that vesting schedule is in each of the union contracts.
Yeah. And, and note, folks, that if we go to the union and need to negotiate this, we would be taking something away from members. So we need to be prepared to give something up to get this. So, uh, it would be, I'm sorry?
I said, you, if we, if we can avoid opening it up, that's kind of discussion up, we're better off.
That's, that's Sheila's recommendation, uh, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, the next is compensation reporting. So there was, um, an addendum that was sent with this, um, that you can just see the chart of how we can choose to supply information to MERS. Um, so basically, currently, we are supplying gross wages to them, um, and that meets the needs of what they, what we are able to do for them. Um, it is a purely administrative manner. I do not see any reason to change our current process of submission. Um, I, I don't know that it benefits our, our, our participants in any way to, to break that down.
This is an administrative matter, isn't it, Sheila? The board doesn't see it, probably doesn't care, but we do need you to uh, make this decision and have it reflected in the minutes uh, so that we can provide that to MERS. Am I stating that correctly?
You are. Basically, it is a report that is pulled from our, uh, the S and A system now, and it just gets uploaded to MERS.
Yeah, thank you.
Sheila, just a quick question. What's an example of a limited part-time employee?
You?
I'm, oh, okay, okay.
Well, limited part-time would be, um, uh, let's say someone in our buildings and grounds department uh, needs to take some leave, medical leave, care for a family, whatever reason. We might bring someone on, uh, twenty hours a week to work from, uh, March through August. Um, that would be a limited, meaning limited duration, March through whatever month they said. And part-time is the, the twenty hours in, in this example. Uh, seasonal, seasonal workers, yeah. They bear a lot of resemblance to seasonal workers, frankly, but yeah, that, that's limited in terms of it, duration and part-time in terms of the hours.
Okay.
Yeah, it's less than twenty-nine hours.
Yeah.
That's an important part of it.
Thank you for that.
Anything else on that? Okay. Um, and then forfeitures, this is for all plans. There is no action that's needed. This, again, just needs to be in the minutes. So currently, if an employee leaves before they are vested, there is a percentage that the, um, employer that, that Grasha County has put into its account um, with the intention of paying out to them. Um, and so if that employee leaves before their five years, then there's a percentage, and that goes into a forfeiture account. And that money is just sitting in this MERS account. When I upload that data for each payroll, it gives me an option when we have to pay our portion. It gives me the option to apply that forfeited money to our bill. Um, and that is the process that we have been doing. And so with this new process, with this new change, that has to be done. So some municipalities may be using that as more of an account that they're just collecting money in that, and that is no longer an option. MERS is saying that that money needs to be put directly on what we owe. So, um, that is really just a processing change, that it's not anything that is going to affect the county or, or the participants.
So this, this is a lot. And of course, Sheila can take your questions. Notice, I defer them, defer to her on these, but this is a lot. And as we said, we just need the minutes to reflect your decisions so we can provide them to MERS. And as I recall, Sheila, you, you were offering a, a form of motion, uh, for the board to help them through this, uh,
Absolutely.
Okay.
So if you guys are ready without any questions, I do have proposed motions. It basically breaks down each, each of the subjects that we've talked about. Um, and so hopefully, it makes a little bit more sense. Okay? So my proposed motion is, um,
A moment, just for a moment. Um, so we're really not changing anything in the plan. We're just trying to get it down on paper of what we have.
Correct. There are changes that could be made. But based on what we're doing, I'm not sure that that's necessary.
Right. I mean, you're recommending, our plan is in place. You just want to get it on paper and.
It has to be, yes.
Yeah.
There is that reimbursement piece though, Sam, for the service credits if you're on, uh, leave. You know, there, there's, there's that small change, but yeah.
It makes sense to pay that back and, and stay whole at the end or whatever, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you can see the motion on that last page. Sheila can read it to you if you, you need it, but, uh, it, it's there for you to see.
Correct.
I do have one question. Um, Mr. Leonard, Lumberman, you are, this is what his business is. Do you have anything? Is there anything that you would say on this?
No, no, I, I, uh, matter of fact, I would, uh, go ahead and move that we adopt Sheila's motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lumberman, uh, second by Commissioner Bunting. Uh, any discussion, further discussion? And it appears we're adopting this last section of the report. Am I correct there?
Yes, please.
That's a, that's a, an act of mercy for Angie, for the, for both.
So Sheila, uh, if I have, um, can I read it? The, what I have in the minutes. To approve granting of service credits for all employees working a minimum of forty hours per month. Because that's your first point.
Correct.
Prove continuing to provide service credits to employees on leave. Continue MERS eligibility for all our employees groups except temporary, limited, part-time and seasonal. Continue no probationary periods for purposes of MERS benefits for new employees. And continue our current method of defining and reporting compensation to MERS for determining contributions.
Correct.
Motion. That covers it. That covers. Okay. All right, I got it.
Alrighty, any further questions? Uh, and the clerk will call the rule, please.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Sheila, I didn't recognize you. Nice to have you here.
Hey folks, will you please also recognize that Sheila has been on the job for about five minutes and she may, managed to wade through all of that MERS stuff? So, uh, she's already making my life so much easier. And so I, uh, I, I second, uh, Commissioner Bunting. It's so good to see you here. It's so good to have you here. Nice job.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Alrighty, uh, next on the agenda, uh, we have the wind turbine tax litigation update. And I believe that you're hailing some of that, Tracy?
Uh, yeah. Um, fortunately, Jim Willer is, is here to help answering your questions. Uh, frankly, this is pretty thick stuff. And, uh, I've wanted though for well over a year to update you on uh, this ongoing litigation, primarily with DTE and Consumers Energy uh, over the issue of taxation of our wind turbines. Uh, one thing and another kept bumping this over, but, um, uh, now is the time and uh, frankly, there's some real activity around this. So, uh, the timing accidentally, uh, happens to be, uh, quite good. So, it, it's, now's the time to provide you an update. I'll come back in subsequent meetings, uh, with updates on two other significant pieces of, uh, litigation, but this is, this is where we're starting. On this issue, it is, it, it's thick and it's complex. And, you know, there's, there's just no other way to put it. Um, I spent a considerable period of time over the last couple of weeks putting together, uh, a memorandum for you, and that's in your, your packet. Um, and that's simplifying things just as much as I possibly could. Because that memo was there, you've had a chance to review it. Uh, I don't intend to review it and go over it, uh, line by line, uh, at any particular, uh, length, but I will highlight some bullet points. Um, first, uh, as, as many of you know, uh, Grasha County's first uh, wind projects were approved in, what, about two thousand and ten? And the first turbines came online in two thousand and twelve. Um, there are currently three hundred and forty-five turbines running in our county. And I've attached a diagram, uh, showing their placement. That's attached. And I'm sorry that those attachments came through sideways and, um, uh, and they're, they're difficult to read. I'm happy to. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on those. But attachment A is a very nice diagram provided by Greater Grasha, always credits to Casey Zainer, showing that the townships that have them and the city of St. Louis, the number of turbines. There are 345, no dispute about that. There are 345 turbines. And that shows the placement and the distribution of them. The turbines have generated millions of additional tax revenue for our county. That's what we had hoped for. That's why you approved them. These numbers are tracked and dropped into the attachment that you have marked as Attachment B. I placed, for those of you that are in the board meeting room, I placed an eight and a half by 14 printout for you. I know that it's quite small in your board packet. Most of you have seen this printout before. John, I'm not sure that you have, and I think this has been made available to you, but I do know that the, the other three have, have seen these. These get updated each year, and when they're updated this year, Jim Wheeler will come in and go through the numbers with you and, and talk about it. This, these numbers are out there, well-publicized, transparent, available to all, as they have always been. So the ultimate issues in the cases that are in the tax tribunal, these are the two issues, made as basic as I can make them. First, an issue is what is the rate of depreciation that is to be applied to the turbines for purposes of calculating the taxes owed? You'll hear that just referred to as rate of depreciation. You'll hear it as what is the multiplier table? Or what's the multiplier that should be applied? Now, Attachment C shows the various tables that are in effect, have been in effect, and that are at issue, and I'll go over those a little bit, a little bit more in a moment. The second issue, this gets very complicated, but the second issue, very basic terms, is what is the true cash value of the turbine? In other words, what's the value of the turbine from which the depreciation should begin? And it's amazing how much discussion and controversy there can be around what seems like a fairly straightforward proposition. Next, in 2012, numerous townships, counties, education entities, education entities, and others who have a stake in wind, banded together to fight the utilities and certain developers on this issue of the rate at which tax, the tax value of turbines declines or depreciates, and thus the amount of taxes that are collected. Now, note that together, all of these entities could fight this issue in a way that none of us could have done alone or individually. This group, you, you hear reference to it. It's the Michigan Renewable Energy Collaborative, or MREC. This group retained attorneys at the Clark Hill firm for representation. I've provided you a list of the MREC members. They are in Attachment B. Noted in Attachment B, there are some additional names, for example, the Clark Hill attorneys. So they aren't all just MREC members, but their affiliation is identified, so you can distinguish those. I would ask you to pull Attachment C from your packet, which is the comparison of multiplier tables. This is, this is really the guts of the thing. And... Tables, that's Attachment C. I'll dive in if everyone has that. Note, the, the column, I'm going to be discussing these briefly, referring to columns starting on the left, which is the year installed, and that runs from year one through year 30, which is considered to be the productive life or the, the period of time that a wind turbine can or is likely to remain productive. Next column is the original STC, State Tax Commission table. That's the table, and this is where it gets kind of, you know, I, I, just tell you, don't start judging it. This is the original table that was used by developers and government entities to calculate the tax dollars that the turbines would generate based on, you know, this, this tax table. It was, these were projections based on the time, at the time that the developments were up for townships and then the, and then the city. So this was the table that folks were looking at. The numbers were calculated, about tax dollars that would be generated. Townships, education districts, and so forth, said, great, that's the number we're looking at. By and large, we see the benefit to our community, and the approvals were done, as you know. That table changed, however, in 2012, and that's the third column from the left. The, this was the table that was presented by the Tax Commission for use once the turbines were built and online. Now, note that this table starts at a lower value. That's point eight rather than 1.0. That's up in year one. And that it reaches full depreciation, point three, at year seven rather than in year 15. So that's a whole bunch of fewer taxes collected and less benefits to the community. So by the time the tax revenue was to be rolling in, the revenue is to be reduced by virtue of this table. Now, we're not sure who changed the table. It's not entirely clear. The utilities deny being involved, but we can tell you that there was no input from the municipalities. There were no studies done to support the new numbers in this table. And so just not sure where this came from. What we do know is that this is going to yield millions of dollars of less tax income if, if it was to be followed. Now, this is why the municipalities are arguing that this is the classic bait and switch. You're looking at the original STC table for making the decisions about whether you wanted to invite these turbines into your community, how it would benefit your community. And then by the time the turbines were built and online, and there's a period of years, two, four years is a safe number, well, by and large, then we have a different state tax table that, incidentally, is going to reach a place of full depreciation much more quickly, and is even going to start at a lower value. Bait and switch. Bait and switch. Now, the AE table, I'm going to jump over to that. That's the fifth table from the left. That column is appraisal economics, AE multipliers. This is the table that the MREC is advancing. And it's being advanced because this is a table that was developed for us, for, for the MREC, by folks with expertise in this area. Appraisal Economics, it's the name of the company, national reputation, national notoriety. These folks do this kind of work. Notice that in this, and, and this one is based on real data. It's based on real data. Note that there, the full rate of depreciation is not reached until year 15. Year 15. So the MREC has been advancing this table simply because it's based on market data, real, real data. So where are we now? We've been litigating this thing for a long time as a participant in the MREC. One case has been tried in the tax tribunal. We've been waiting 15 or 16 months for this opinion to be handed down. We had reason to think that, gosh, well, last June, that thing was going to be handed down. We had reason to think that, and I, I, I said somewhat tongue-in-cheek in my, my memo that we've been expecting an opinion any day now since last June, and that's not really a terrible, much of an exaggeration. You know, it's a usual practice in litigation for the sides to sit down together to try to hammer out a settlement. You know, sometimes it isn't just possible. I've been, you know, it, sometimes it just isn't possible, but it's a pretty common practice in civil or tax litigation. Our attorneys at Clark Hill tell us that they have made overtures to the utilities, but that the utilities have no interest in negotiating this. They're, they're happy to just litigate this in, into eternity. In fact, I, I believe, Jim, that they sat in your office one day and, and said as much. They're happy to just litigate all of these cases. And why not? They have deep pockets, they have in-house attorneys, and truly, they can fiscally sustain litigation into eternity. Also, their attorney fees just get returned to them through the rates that are approved by the Public Service Commission. So, hey, why not? I, I will say too, that this should never have gotten this far, as I've gotten into this and come to understand it. And as a, a bit of a, a side note here, Jim and I came into our, I was right about this time, this had already been underway for a few years. We've been feeling like we've been running along behind a little bit, trying to catch up in our understanding of, of these, these issues. But I, I, I think we're in pretty good shape at this point. But, you know, I, I, I think I know enough about it now. No, I know enough about it now to, to really offer you an opinion that this should never have gotten this far. I don't want to beat up on the State Tax Commission, which is what I say immediately before beating up on the State Tax Commission. They really should have stepped in early on, gotten everybody into a room, and facilitated a solution. This, this is where this, this needed to, to happen. But, okay, that, that didn't get done. Given, and of course, we've been litigating here for quite a long time, but here's the point about litigation. Whether we win or lose this case, whoever loses is going to appeal this thing. There's just little doubt about that. Also, this case, once decided, it's great, but there are a whole bunch of other cases just lined up behind it. So we just got a whole bunch of cases ready to, to cycle through. Yeah, so it's just kind of a no end in sight, really. You know, the most desirable solution at this point, in my view and in the view of the MREC, is, is legislative, so that we can get a solution for all of the cases that are lined up in the queue, but also those coming in the future, because they're going to keep coming. I mean, this issue isn't going to go away. We, we're, we're getting, generating some interest on that front. Last, last term, last session, excuse me, Senator VanderWaal carried a bill that was Senate Bill 46. That, that multiplier table is also included. You can see that, the, actually, it's the second column from the right, Proposed SB 46. Again, on Attachment C, that's the table that was dropped in, or the multiplier that was dropped into Senate Bill 46. There was some discussion. Jim Wheeler traveled to Lansing to attend a meeting, wasn't quite a hearing, wasn't really a meeting, but Jim offered some...
It was actually a finance committee hearing for the Senate.
Thank you. And Jim offered some comments and really seemed to catch Senator VanderWaal's issue on, or his ear on some of the points that he made. But Senate Bill 46 died. Senator Daley has now expressed a willingness to carry a bill, and there are discussions with his office that, that are underway at this point. Now, the governor's office is also following this. You've finally got the right people getting to listen to this and show some interest. So the governor's office is following this, as is Treasury, and these folks are getting together along with representatives from MREC and from the utilities. And they're going to sit down and begin talking about this. You know, this is going to take months, though, but, you know, it's, it's the, it's probably the, the best news we've had in a while, but they're not going to turn around a solution tomorrow. So this is your update. Been offering you a few words, though, about the utilities. We've, we've tried and I think succeeded, for the most part, in having a very good relationship with our utilities. We viewed consumers and DTE as our neighbors, invited them into the community to help to establish power generation for them, to contribute to the generation of alternative energies. And of course, there's been benefit to this community as well through tax collection and through lease payments to landowners. But at this point, I would suggest to you that neither of these are really being the neighbors that we expect them to be. To, to engage us in eternal litigation, to show no interest in settling this and arriving at a resolution that can benefit both sides. I, this, they're just not being the good neighbors that we expected them to be. I would expect the utilities to recognize this bait and switch and to recognize that that's, that's not really what we want to have happen, and that really hasn't been the case. So also, the utilities had promised to do a study in 2016, and they haven't done it. So, you, you know, it, it's, it's been a little bit disappointing. It's been a little bit disappointing. And, and I can only hope that these folks will participate with enthusiasm and good faith in the discussions that are going to be put together involving MREC members, utilities, governor's office, and Treasury. And so, but we're actively participating in, in this. I've gotten myself a seat on the MREC Executive Group. We're now meeting each Friday morning and crafting, updating as needed our strategy and getting this thing resolved, not just one case or one group of cases, but looking for longer-term solutions. So, Jim, with all of that, what would you add?
I think you've covered it pretty clearly, and, and I think with Tracy on board, and the magnitude of it, the, the two by far largest tax collectors in the county are the county itself or its operations, and the RESD are the two major people. Jan Amsterberg's been involved with it for quite a while, also the superintendent, but Tracy now stepped up, got on the executive committee of it, and I think driving it forward with the idea that legislatively, to me, is really the solution for this. I think that's the big thing we need to focus on and push it and push it harder, and that's going to take some lobbying efforts on our parts in order to do it going forward. But no, I think Tracy's in the right place for it. I can help out as we go, and some others of us can too, to, hopefully, we can get, get this resolved so we can all just settle it and be done with it going forward.
George, I saw you have a reaction, and John, you look skeptical to me. Anything that I can, any information?
Well, here's the problem. We've been doing this for a long time, and through certain circumstances that I've been under, I have a real hard time thinking that the power companies have anything but their best interests involved. And so I would encourage our board chair especially, and the rest of the board, to contact our senators and representatives to ensure that they know that we are on board with, with help, them helping us to lit, litigate this matter.
George, I, I appreciate that. I, I do think that that is important. Senator Altman was in the courthouse. We could go Friday, and, you know, just for a community meet and greet, and I, I took advantage of that. Went in and, and had a conversation with him, provided him some of the materials that I've provided to you, not, not this memo, but, you know, some of the materials that you have. And he has shown interest in having a follow-up meeting in his office in Lansing with, with Jim and me. Jim, as usual, did not know I was volunteering him, but, you know, he's a pretty easygoing guy. So I also, George, plan to visit and, and really step up the communication with the, the townships that have these turbines. And if we, we can't get a, a letter out of those townships directed to our legislative delegation, I, I think that there is, you know, this is of huge significance to the communities. This is where we really need our representatives to step in and, and represent us. This is where we really need our representatives to step in and represent us. You know, utilities hold a lot of sway in Lansing. You know, so we've got to do our light work. We just have to show up and provide the other arguments and point out the other pieces of this thing. So, thanks for your comments.
Yeah.
Tracy, I'd like to be added to that meeting if you do get something set up with Senator Altman. And I can be flexible and take some time off for that.
I really appreciate that, Chuck. I was actually going to ask you for that, and thank you so much for stepping up in that way.
What about the roundup?
I believe that our- I believe that our townships, unfortunately, are not as aware as we are of the situation. And I think now is the time that they've been become aware, and I think they have to become more active, and we will work towards getting them more active, because, like I say, recent developments, I understand that the utility companies are only in it for, in my opinion, I'll say that for the press, for my opinion, that they're in it for themselves. I'm serious, folks. If we want to defend ourselves, we have to do it ourselves.
You know, when the MREC Executive Group meets now, every Friday morning, it had been idle for a very long time. But there have been meetings to which all MREC members have been invited, I don't know, maybe once a year or something. You know, there is an opportunity for all of the townships that have a stake, counties, education districts that have a stake, to have that information. I was very pleased to see at the MREC meeting last Friday morning that Jerry Rhodey seemed to be on the call. He didn't contribute, but he was there and listening. I was very pleased to see that. Jim followed up with Jerry today and asked if he might be able to participate in this discussion tonight. Jerry had another commitment and couldn't make it. But, you know, Jerry's been involved with this from the beginning, and he's been at each of the full MREC meetings that I've attended in the time that I've been here. Jerry knows this issue pretty darn well. And so, I think when getting Jerry to write a letter or to participate in that effort, I don't think that'll take much arm twisting.
Jerry Rose is from my district, and he's been on that, I think, from day one. They elected him to represent the district.
And also, Commissioner Bunning had an excellent suggestion. The Fourth District Roundup is coming up March 5th and 6th. We'll have all the legislatures from the Fourth District at that. It's a fundraiser, but we might be able to put something together there also.
Certainly, Mr. Bunting, let us know how we can help.
Also on that too, Tracy, Kevin Beeson's been active in this since they obtained Wind, and Kevin's also pretty, he's in the Township Association.
Right.
And along with Doug Merchant's also been pretty active in this too. And through both his assessor role and through his township role, even though his township is arcaded, it doesn't have wind.
I think it's fair to say that Jim and I are, relatively speaking, the newcomers to all of this. I think we're very lucky to have folks in this community that really have been involved from the beginning, and of course, Kevin and Jerry are among them. Jan knows, from the Education Service District, also knows an awful lot about this and has a great deal at stake.
There should be, when this first started, I believe there's other counties that have wind turbines, and they have appointed someone from each one of those counties that are part of this program also. And you can probably get ahold of Jerry, and he would tell you.
The list is in there.
Yeah, Jan, there's an attachment there that has given you the MREC roster. We know exactly who's involved, and we see the representatives when we go through the full MREC meetings. So, that's not a mystery.
Okay.
I got a question, just on some of these new projects. We just finished a couple up in the southern part of the county, and there's been some that have been put in over the years. And like you say, these started about 10 years ago. So where does that number come in when they present this to, who do they present the taxable number, just to the county, and now they're giving us the real number? They're giving us the reduced number? That's what these new ones come on as? Like, we just got some run in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so where does that number at? I mean, are they still trying to bait and switch, or are we still taking the bait?
No, we aren't, and Jim can help out with this. What I can tell you is that every taxing entity here, all the townships, the county, we are using the AE table. So the utilities might want us to use another table. The original table has been abandoned. You know, we believe the AE table is the right table. And so that's what all of the taxing entities in our county are using. The developers, by and large, are on board with this. They have accepted that the AE table is the table. It's the utilities that continue to debate and challenge this. There is getting into more complexity than I can really explain. The value of these things gets reported to, you know, various places along the way, and the utilities are using different values and different numbers depending on the reporting entity. Now, I'm not suggesting that that necessarily is not appropriate, but it's a point that our attorneys have certainly noted. I didn't spend really any time talking with you about the finances. Before I take more questions, I'm just going to talk a little bit about Attachment D in the materials we gave you. And these are the changes in tax collections under certain tables. Attachment D, there are two pages to this attachment. Now, these are numbers that are not to live and die by. There are a couple things. First of all, these things were, these numbers were prepared by Chris and Keegan almost a year ago, when I first hoped to come to you with an update on this litigation. Also, so they are, you know, they're about a year old. The other piece is that additional turbines have come online since these numbers were generated almost a year ago. But they serve the purpose of showing you what is at stake. And I remember well, because it's a quick bullet point, and that's what I can retain, Rex Smith, our former equalization director, saying, "You're spending thousands to save millions." And looking at page one of Attachment D, this is the AE or the MREC table, and what the collections would be. And utilizing the AE table, revenues that were collected from 2012 to 2019 were just over 15 million. The future tax revenues, this was the projection piece that would be dated, and that there have been some changed circumstances, but you could see tax collections there would have been almost, anticipated tax collections would have been almost 26 million. Okay, let's work from that number then, and go to page two of Attachment D. On the top left, you see the table, the original state tax commission table, so the original STC table. If this were the table that had been in effect, or that was to be applied, the revenue from 2012 to 2019 would have been over $1.6 million above what the AE table was. And again, this is the table that folks were working with when we were talking about bringing Wind into this community, and the numbers that the townships and other entities were crunching to look at what the benefits might be. Extending that out for the 10-year period, 2020 to 2030, there would have been an additional 2.6 million over that $26 million figure shown in the AE table. So what you're seeing on page two is what the numbers would have been above or below the figures shown in the AE table. Going to the current state tax, the state STC table, you'll see it's utilities preferred, and I'm skipping over the one on the top right. You'll see that, yeah, the utilities prefer this. Revenues generated between 2012 and 2019 using this table would have been almost 1.4 million less than the AE table. And over the 10-year period, $5.3 million less. So this is the spending thousands to save millions, and this is what is at issue. So, we're not, I'm not asking Chris and Keegan to come in and do the extensive financial presentation for you at this point. This gives you a bit of a sense of what the differences are, the sort of dollars that are at stake. Once we get an opinion from the tax tribunal, assuming any of us are still working and are alive, I'll ask Chris and Keegan to put their heads together and come up with some numbers. Let me tell you too, that the real risk here is that if we lose this badly, there is the possibility that all of the taxing entities would be required to refund or reimburse or pay additional tax revenues, pay them back to the utilities. So it's not just a function, I'm sorry, I didn't make a greater, place greater emphasis on this point earlier in my comments, but it's not just that we wouldn't collect the revenue that we feel we had been promised and that we were anticipating. It's that if a tax table that is to the advantage of the utilities is determined to, by the tax tribunal, to be the table we should be using, there's an argument to be made that we would need to pay the difference back to utilities. And that's going to be a chunk. That's going to be a chunk. Now, you know, we're not wringing our hands about it, can't give you the dollars at this point. There will be a great deal more to talk about once we get an opinion from the tax tribunal. I did want to have this time tonight, though, to lay this foundation for you, so that when we come back, you will have heard this. Now I really do think that I've covered everything. And I won't say I'll stop talking, because you all know better. George, stop laughing, please.
You know, I look at consumers and DTE, they're in a position that they have to provide some renewable energy by sometime in the future.
2040.
You know, I just find it hard. I wouldn't do business with these people. I mean, they're not going to be upfront and do that. You know, they want to start another project here. They're working on another project in our county. And I guess I would chase around like a dog, I guess, and just say, you know, you're not going to get what you think. You know, if they're spinning this, if they're spinning this old table to these new people that are coming on board, that's not the case.
Yeah, you know, DTE is probably, Jim tells me, I don't know these things, I repeat what Jim tells me. DTE has done its last wind project here in the county. Consumers is still involved in some projects. And then, of course, we look down the road to solar. And so, you know, DTE may or may not care about the relationship and, you know, being good neighbor and all of that kind of thing. But, you know, I think consumers still have a stake in this. And, you know, I'm choosing to speak, not in closed session tonight, on this issue, because I do think it's time that the community knows, you know, what's happening, the position the utilities are taking, and the position they're really putting the communities in. I think too, that, you know, Jim Wheeler and I and others have gone to these township meetings where they're reviewing their wind ordinances, that they would look to amend them in ways that would really end any future wind development. And we've shown up and we've talked about, you know, this is the benefit to you. Look at where we were, look at where we are, look at where we could be, you know, this kind of thing. And we've really tried to defend wind for this community because of the economic components. And I just don't know if we want to do that anymore. You know, I'll take my direction from this board, but, you know, I think it's time to rethink that, and I also think it's time to speak in these tougher terms. And again, I'm choosing to do it at an open meeting.
I believe DTE, they're not going to do any more projects in our county. I mean, we're probably filling up, but they're going to do business in other parts of the state. And I just think that those people need to be aware of this is happening. And the other thing I'd be interested to see is when that changed? When did that, when did that pay rate scale change? When did it come in? Did somebody approve it? I mean, how did it work out at that point? You know, we're paying you this much tax year one, and then year six, we're paying you this much, and that's our new rate?
Yeah.
I mean, we must have seen a drop in taxes somewhere back long ago.
Well, I think George was about to make a point, but what I do know is, we have the original tax table, again, I'm referring to Attachment C, and then there was the change in 2012. And I think I had mentioned that the utilities claimed that they were not involved in this. There may have been a developer that was involved in this, but we do know that there were, there was no market data, there was no study of that. So, but, you know, someone got to the state tax commission, the municipalities frankly were quite surprised when this new table issued. The original table had been accepted by just about everyone. There's a fellow at the state tax commission who calculated, developed this table. It made sense to everyone, everyone accepted it, there was no dispute there. So, you know, that initial change in 2012 didn't go through the process. I think that some folks were thinking that it should have. And Sam, this is the argument about the bait and switch. So you get us all interested with that original table, and then by the time that things go online, you're using a different table with pretty dramatically different revenues.
Wasn't there signatures by somebody on that original table when this thing first come 15, 20 years ago?
I don't know how that works. Jim, I'm guessing you don't either. But, you know, what I can say is, someone can sign it as approving it, but you don't know what the drivers were behind the scene, what or who the drivers were behind this. So you're left to speculate somewhat. But that's what we know about that 2012 change.
Sam, can I talk to you, Sam, a minute? All I know, Sam, is that, that here's the deal. DTNE is done with Graca County. They have told me they're done.
Yeah, me too.
Consumers Energy wants to continue. That's where we have possibly our leverage. In other words, if they want to continue, they're going to have to come on board with the current tax level. And that's, I think, that's where our leverage lies, is with Consumers Energy. Now, if they don't want to, they don't want to do it, well, that's fine, but I'm sorry.
In this next project, it's not going to be consumers out running, leading the charge, it's going to be a developer.
Yeah, but it goes, but it goes back to consumers at the end of the day.
Yeah. You may want to talk to the developer and see where these numbers are.
Well, that's the problem, because I have no confidence, and I will speak, and the press can put me out there, I have no confidence in DTNE. They have done some other things that I can't talk about right now, but I'm not happy with them, with how they've conducted business. If consumers wants to conduct business, then they should come on board with the tax schedule exactly the way it is. And if they're not, then we have a serious problem.
Well, and that's what you would expect and hope for, and that's what really feels like, you know, is a problem. But I want to point out that at some point, we're going to get saturated with turbines, but solar is next stop. And the legislature is kind of jumping into the solar issue, and I'm glad they are, but, you know, what about wind? And I'm glad they are, but, you know, what about wind? And I don't want them to group solar and wind and just say, hey, let's do a pelt. Here, let's pick a number. And, uh, because, you know, they're different and there are different issues. So some of the legislative work we're doing is trying to encourage folks to view solar and wind differently. Because, you know, the easy thing to do is going to be just throw it all in a pile and say, here, do it all the same. And that's going to be a tough sell because I think you're getting a sense of how complicated all of this is. And we are all tempted to take complicated things at the simplest possible terms and the simplest possible solutions. So kind of fighting that battle as well. So in terms of future activity in this county, don't forget about solar.
Well, I, I agree, I agree with you. And, and you know as well as I do, putting a solar complex in is a lot less expensive than putting a wind energy in. And, and so we have to be cognizant of that, all right? But I don't believe that we're in a position now to let them do what they want to do. We have to fight, we, we have to take a stand. And we have to say, this is what we want. And, 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 and so be it. So if consumers not, doesn't carry, want to carry on, that's fine. Because, and I don't want to say that at the detriment of the different townships that have a possibility of gaining something. But we have to look at the whole situation as the county gaining something. And so that, you know, that's basically where we're at.
Or is the county going to be responsible for more payback?
Exactly, that's my point.
I think it'll be shared. It'll be shared by all of those that have, have been the recipients. But we don't want to cut off our nose. I'm sorry, Sam.
Take some of these little townships out there. You tell them they're going to have some type of bill down the road someday. They're going to stay wet.
Pine River Township, Pine River Township has been socking some money away just in case. I, I don't know if there are others doing that. I, I know Pine River is, but, you know, we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face. But I do think that any future projects that you folks might be approached on, you know, you might ask some additional questions with this experience in mind.
Well, to be fair, Tracy, we didn't know. I mean, we started out at ground zero when we went, what the whole thing was. So we're just building in as we go. And the more we find out, you know, maybe that's not the best way, the route to go. But we, it is what it is. And so hopefully, we can fight it through legislation. And hopefully, our representative, uh, you know, Senator Outman and his son, Representative Outman, can help us out on these issues.
Right. And that's our question. We also have a second representatives from Graca County. So we're lucky having two of them.
Yeah, we plan to hit the Outmans and Grandfeller. And of course, we're not in Senator Daley's district, but want to be as helpful to him as we can be.
So, so one, one thing I just want to put out. I, I know Emma from the Graca County Heroes out there. Please get this out because this is very important to Graca County and to other counties around Michigan. We need your help.
And, you know, also speaking to Emma, and I've, I've had her in mind, that if this is a story that is of interest to the Herald, and I would think it would be, I'd be very happy to, again, there's a lot here. So doing what I can to create bullet points or to explain this in a way that can be communicated to the readers. Of course, I'm here, George is here, Chuck, I know you're, all of you, I know, would thank yourselves about. You've given me a, a great deal of time tonight to lay this out for you. And I'm, I'm very, very grateful. It's, it's been very much on my mind to get this to you. It's, it's so very important. And if you are at all like me, you'll, one day, here soon, get in your car and drive somewhere. And you'll think of all the questions that you wish you had asked at the time. And as always, I'm, I'm always available.
Alrighty, thank you, Tracy. Let's see, we're moving on.
Hey Chuck, if we could just acknowledge that Jim Wheeler has given up his evening to be here and support this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So, alrighty, we're moving on. Some unfinished business, Jan, you had something here? Compensation committee?
I'm trying to think what that was.
Alright, well.
Are you talking about finance meeting?
No, that would be after that.
Okay. You were going to, you were going to talk to a lawyer or something about whether this is legal.
I can't read, can you say it again?
Sam, I think we got.
This is too many talking.
You were going to talk to an attorney to see if this was legal. You voted no against it.
Well, you know what I did? I got ahold of Richard Gay. Richard Gay is an attorney, and he also was the chair for 14 years on the board. And we had a nice conversation. And I talked to him about, about this. And he said that we, I, and I didn't read, and once he told me, I remembered that. We, we were with William Rye, it's associates. And they were the ones who, they did the study, and they were the ones that would, they, they did a lot of business with other counties. And they were the ones that would tell us that, you know, where the pay scale should be with elected officials. And the reason, I remember this now that we, once he told me, he said that they used to, years ago, they did have a, a group, outside group that did do this. But we just didn't use it very much because, by the time I came on, because of the position that the county was in. We didn't have any money, we couldn't even give any kind of raises. And at that time, we were having to let people go. And so then when we decided to, you know, money started coming in, we got kind of straightened around a little bit. We hired William Rye, and they did a study. And it was, you know, you can't do a, a huge raise, but it was kind of something that was, they would recommend what we should be doing and what we shouldn't. And he said that it worked out well because when, if the board was to do this or, well, one time we were doing raises. When we started, it was like you'd give one a raise and somebody else would want a raise. And then sometimes there would be a conflict of interest. And he said, when I first told him, he goes, oh, he goes, it is a conflict of interest for anybody like outside, like the other commissioners to take and do, uh, to do the study or to give a raise. By the way, you can call him if you'd like and talk to him. He's right in Alma. Do, do you guys know who he is? I would thank you when he's here at the courthouse.
Of course, of course, I think people, people know who Richard Gay is. First of all, there was a combining of issues there that I, I'd like to help untangle. First of all, William and Rye is a company. I've got the study sitting right in my office. They, they did a compensation study for the paid positions in the county. It did not involve elected officials. It, it's a, it's a very complex study. What we did with municipal services for our new executive group was just a very small sample of what the full William and Rye study was. Again, that was not elected officials. Uh, second, the conflict of interest. We have an attorney opinion on that that said what we, what we knew. But we have now an attorney who has signed off on it. Having the board make a decision about its compensation or that of any other elected official is not a conflict of interest.
Can I see that?
Excuse me, excuse me. It is very specifically stated in statute that the board can make decisions about elected officials' compensation. So, so, yeah, they can, that's statute.
But it is a conflict of interest.
What Richard Gay was saying in terms of a, a conflict. And I believe that this was the follow-up. Uh, there was the discussion at the last meeting that Commissioner Bunting, you, you were certain that there was a compensation committee in the past. Richard Gay was involved in that. You were going to speak with him and report back about what that compensation committee looked like.
Yes, I'm, I just told you. We, at the time, I mean, we're talking like 14, 15 years ago. And he said that at the time that we decided that afford to give races to the elected officials, what we did, we went through William Rye. And he said that way, there was no conflict of interest.
Let's move on.
I believe we have an attorney opinion who we work with every day and.
Okay.
Do you, you do have attorney opinion?
I think Jan's asking for that opinion so that can get around everybody, I guess.
We need to give it to.
Let's move on, please. Give me a break. Sorry.
Alrighty, we'll, we'll be looking for that opinion to come through. So we have that in writing.
Commissioner, but, excuse me, Commissioner Murphy, the opinion that we're referring to is the one that has already been circulated to this board that was on the issue of conflict of interest. You've all received that.
Okay.
You said it again, I guess I, I missed it or something.
Alrighty, let's move on to the finance meeting then, next. I'll need a motion to move out of this meeting and move into finance. So moved. A motion by Commissioner Lumberman. We have a second.
I'll second it.
A second by Commissioner Bunting to move into the finance committee meeting.
Any discussion?
Clerk will please call a roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bailey.
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. All right, very, very good. I'll turn the gavel over to the finance chair.
Do it up when we go back and we have to do it again.
Yes.
Do we want a recess? Does anybody want to take a five-minute break? I can't hear you, George.
I said unless you do, Jan.
Nope, anybody there? Do you want to take a break?
No, we're good.
Okay. Then we need to go back into the finance meeting now. So we need a roll call.
We just did that.
That was to go out. You do a roll call to go out of this meeting. And you have to do a roll call to go into the next meeting.
Not correct.
I think we did that, Jan.
I can't hear you.
We, we had postponed the committee of the whole, and now we're in the finance committee meeting.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Okay, I call the meeting to order. Five minutes. Okay, I see that we have Chris there. And I'm going to turn it over to you to, to do the general, or the cash balance and delinquent tax and self-tax. So that'd be one and probably one, two and three.
Commissioner Bunting, just real quick, though, I'd like to speak to you about the state revenue sharing, the future of that. The governor released her proposed budget over the weekend for next fiscal year. The state revenue sharing historically has been about $900,000 for Graca County for our general fund, which is approximately 8% of our total general fund every year. But it's an amount of it, and we rely on it to maintain operations on an annual basis. In 2020, the state sent us in round figures $690,000, which was approximately $200,000 less than what we were expecting due to shortfalls related to COVID. Now, they did send us some additional funds. They were federal funds to help make up for that, but they're restricted in how we could use them. Our current fiscal year, we're budgeted to get $920,000. And in the governor's proposed budget for next year, she's proposing Graca County would get $915,000, which is quite a bit higher than what we were expecting. The state had been telling us that they would be, they, they would be running a deficit in their next fiscal year. And revenue sharing payments would suffer because of that. And so even though it's very, very early in their budgeting process, they've got six months to go before it's finalized, most likely, the first number thrown out is very favorable for Graca County. Obviously, I will keep you updated on that as new developments come out. But.
So I think that's wonderful news, considering that we've had a lot of businesses closed this last year.
Absolutely. Now, I will update you on the audit when we get to D1, but for now, I'm going to get into our cash balances. I'm going to pull those up on the screen here for you. So you'll see our January 2021 cash balances for the general fund. We're at 4.6 million, delinquent tax fund, 5.6 tax sale, residence denial interest. Overall, we're sitting favorably. Looking year-over-year, January 2020 to January 2021. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll move on to the check registers. Again, we have it presented, checks over 10,000. And then a complete check register. I'll give you a moment to look through those if you haven't already. And I am looking forward to your questions.
Is that first item legal advice for 12,000? That's related to the wind turbines that we just spoke of, correct?
That is correct. Here on County EDC, they are head chief of, of the lawsuit.
I have a question on page five. It says overpayments. Chris, what would that be?
What is the amount of that overpayment?
Uh, 200, or $275. It's not a lot. I just wondered what it, it's from the city of Alma. That means they overpaid us or?
$275?
No, I'm on page five, you're on the wrong page, I think.
I don't have a complete packet, so that's why I asked for the amount of the overpayment so I can find it.
Oh, okay.
Because I have it ordered, I'm out.
It's 275.
It's not showing up here.
I think the account is 255. And the amount is 26,783.
Commissioner Lumberman, one more time, what was the amount?
26,78372. At the top of the page, City Alma.
It doesn't have a department on it, that's why.
I know what you're talking about, I can't find it. There it is. 26,782. This is going to be discussed also in section D1. But this was money that the city of Alma had sent to us for tax purposes, for tax collections. And they never told us what it was for. They never told us what mileage it was related to. So we set it into the overpayment account until they were able to identify it. With the help of Yo and Yo and the review that they did, we've identified where that needed to go. So we had to write a check to move it out of there. So that is what that overpayment is. It was just a holding area until we were able to identify where this money was supposed to go.
Okay, and another question on the same page, just a little ways, the department. I see you have a new department, 002. What department would that be? See, it's right there.
Yep. Uh, that's not an actual, that's not, that's not technically a department. Um, it's, it's an accounting code that we use.
Okay.
This is the fringe benefit fund. Because we have so many different items that we track and report in fringe benefits, from healthcare to murders to retirees, current. We have different departments to help split that up. And it's just an accounting, it's not a real department. So we'll use 000.
Okay. Okay.
001, 002, to help split up these different functions within the fringe benefit fund.
That was the last.
And then I have another question on page six, and I think I probably know what it is, but I'm just asking to make sure, you've got on page six, the Grashet RESD, and there was two checks to them, is one of them for regular taxes and one from the wind turbines?
No, they're both from all tax collections. It was January's tax collection season, and we have to send them a check every two weeks by law for anything that's been collected.
Okay.
So you'll see one right away again in February, when I report February's.
And now I'm on page seven. You've got 44 North, what is that?
Oh my God!
What?
44 North is our, they, they maintain our healthcare benefits.
Okay. Are you praying, somebody?
Chris, the payment, Grashet Integrated Health Network for $50,000, what is, what is that?
We have a contract with them to run mental health services in the county. We send them a quarterly payment of $50,000 four times a year, so our contract-
Okay, so quarterly. Thank you.
Pretty much, there's a lot of things there, but, you know, the simple things that I didn't recognize.
Well, anytime you want to shoot me an email, anything that you see over the weekend before an interprophesia for this meeting, I can get that back to you before the meeting.
You know, I will soon, I'm having trouble with my computer, I just took it in, and I've got to take it back in again until I can get that straightened out, I'm having a hard time using the internet, so. It's a problem with the computer itself. But I will, as soon as I get it taken care of, I can do that. Actually, I want to call you, so I can talk to you on the phone.
Well, that would be good, Jan.
I will soon. It's a busy time of the year, I, I had forgotten when I, when I was telling you about meetings, I had, I actually forgot two other meetings that I've had that week. But, you know, we're not lucky to be on vacation like you guys.
I, I just want to remind you, Jan, you are the finance chair, and you should do these things, and you should be in contact with Chris constantly, thank you.
Well, I will be. Some of us work, have jobs.
It's taken months, and you haven't been yet.
Well, you know something, I don't have to answer to you. We're all commissioners, we're all equal, and-
You have to answer to the people of Grasha County, Jan, thank you.
I do, I do answer to them.
I don't, so-
I, I'm at my, all the stuff that we're doing today will go to my departments or my townships.
Let's get back to the meeting.
Yes. Okay, anyway, does anybody else have any questions on on the checks that were written? Okay, we're up to page 12. Chris, oh, I'm looking for that. Is there any questions? On the funds here. Chris, I think you do a good job, I will-
Is it page 12 that you're reviewing? Are you skipping over the treasures?
I can't hear you, will you repeat that?
Are you skipping over the treasures report?
Yes, I'm down, I went ahead and went down to page one of two, transfers. Does anybody else have any questions?
Does the treasurer have a report?
Yep, we lost George, where's he at?
I have a question.
Oh, there you are. I can't hear you, George, or, I mean, Sam.
Does the treasurer have a report?
Yes. Hi, Sam, I have information in the packet for, pardon?
I see it in the packet, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Terry.
Hi, Jan, how are you tonight?
Real good.
Good, I have in the packet, I have the transfer activity for January, and my receipt listing for all monies taken in in January. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
No one, okay.
How about, real quick, hey, Terry?
Yes.
In commercial bank here, I see that the transfers are all kind of are we just moving some money around in some different accounts there?
Uh, some of that is, Sam, some of it is, yeah, most of it is going from the 99 account, which is our general fund into, if we have to fund, say, healthcare, the flex account, some of the road commission, if they pull money out of some of their investments, it's, it goes to our 99, and then we have to just put it into their account, because we, they don't transfer from them, from the investment to their account, so we just put it in ours and then over to theirs, there's that big one, the 549 or 3107. And then we've got transferring out from the 999 account into the delinquent account, so it's mostly, yeah, just transferring from the 99.
That's a, commercial pays us interest on those accounts, I think, I may have been wondering.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Terry, you're in your second month, how are you doing?
I'm doing good, I go along for a little while, and then I go, ah, and then I go along, and, you know, everything's good, so it's, it's great. It's not any different than what I expected it would be, it's a learning curve, and I'm, I'm really enjoying it.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to page 23. And Chris, I'll turn this back over to you.
Is page 23 the summary of Yo and Yo's?
Is.
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again, just to go over the memo, and to go over Yo and Yo's report to us. I will first tell you that it was very, very beneficial to do this. They did find where several millages were underpaid, and some of them were actually overpaid. All of these millages were related to the city of Elma, we had not been able to settle with the city of Elma in March of 2020, which is when the treasurer's office needs to settle with each individual municipality. What was found is that Grasha County owed $185,000 to them for settlement, which was not done because Grashet County did not know what taxes the city of Elma had collected and given to them, that was our underlying issue. And what they found is that the city of Elma, in fact, had collected $101,000 in taxes, and did not remit them to the county, which is why we did not want to give them money if they owed us money, if that makes sense to you. I'm going to stop right there, is there any initial question on the very broad issues that were filed? So what we did is we gave them the net $84,000 for settlement from our delinquent tax fund. If we had settled in March of 2020, and they had given us all of our tax money, we would have gave them 185,000. But because they still had some of our tax money, we gave them 84,000. We did meet with them, we walked through this with them, and they understood it, and we're very appreciative that the board took the initiative to have this review done, to help them out. But there is one unfortunate thing that did come out of this, most of the millages are in-house. Parks and Rec, we owe Parks and Rec a little bit of money, the delinquent tax fund does now. The sheriff's deputy millage, the delinquent tax fund owes them a little bit of money now. Unfortunately, we overpaid the library millage, that's not an in-house millage, we distribute that to the individual libraries in the community. And the individual libraries were overpaid $68,000. So, our treasurer has been working with the libraries on the best way to recover the, the overpayment that was performed last year.
Chris, that, that line there says the city of Elma overpaid the library millages, but we have to collect it back from them?
The city of Elma sent us a check and labeled it library millage. The check was for $68,000 too much. We took that entire check and distributed it to the individual libraries. So it's a county-wide millage, so every municipality sends that money to the county, and then we send it to the libraries. The city of Elma mislabeled one of their checks, or miscalculated one of their checks by $68,000, and that entire amount was distributed unfortunately.
Um, Chris, when, when we first started talking about this in, in January, I'm, I'm just going by recollection, but I was thinking that you had said that it looked like we had a 60,000 shortfall, and but yet we still owe another 84,000 to the city of Elma?
Let me explain something right here, and if this helps, I'm hoping that this will answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
On this spreadsheet is every one of the county millages, county operating, county senior, that's commission on aging, county road patrol, parks, ag, econ, library, and then drains. Right here, the city, this column here, city owes the county if it's in parentheses, so the city of Elma would owe the county. We're looking at commission on aging, the city of Elma owes commission on aging $60,000. The city of Elma owes road $41,000. They owe parks.
Chris, that's covered up by our pictures, can we slide that over a little bit? We can't see the last column you're, you're talking about.
Let me do this, see if this will help you.
There you go.
Do you see this now?
No, we can see it, yep.
Okay, you can't see what, which one it is, but the 60,000 is COA. This is our road patrol, I believe 32 is parks. 41 is split between MSU and Econ. 72 was the libraries, so too much went to the libraries. 4,000 of it didn't get distributed, so that's why it doesn't match the 68 that I showed you before. And then drains, 24,800 needs to get distributed to the drains. This is the comprehensive review that Yo and Yo did for us, and it was fortunate that we were able to get them to do it, because they have access to the city of Elma's records, because they also do the city of Elma's.
Chris, I have a few questions for you before you go on. On the, on, on all of these that are millages, do they, do you give them the money, or do we keep the money and, and write their checks for them?
All millage money comes to the county of Grashet, and then we distribute it where it needs to go.
Okay, I was thinking that commission on aging, don't we, didn't we take that in-house?
The only time that we would collect the millages is if it were delinquent, otherwise, the local municipalities collect the millages.
Okay.
And that's all based on how the laws were written up a long, long time ago.
Okay.
Chris, Tracy here, specifically when you say we collect, where specifically is that being collected in our county system?
The delinquent funds.
It's the treasurer's department that collects monies, is that correct?
Yes.
It's not financial administration, it is the treasurer's office, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
We lost you guys.
Chris, just real quick, I'm glad Yo and Yo got this taken care of, and had access to Elma's stuff, too. I guess I'm amazed that somebody in the treasurer's department, even though there's some struggles there, that these are not small numbers, I mean, these are, you know, 20, 30% of what they collected last year. And, I mean, I'm surprised I didn't get caught, the other thing I was wondering is that, I guess that's just a comment, and the other thing I'm wondering about is, how much did this end up costing you, Yo and Yo?
I just want to respond to your comment real quick, the treasurer's department here at Grashet County was aware of it. Unfortunately, nothing was done. And we came in, the bill just came in for it, and I went to look for it on Becky's desk when you guys started the meeting. And I couldn't find it, but I believe it was right around $4,000, which is half of what you approved.
Yeah, I thought it was like going to be around six or eight or something. Okay, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Any other questions related to the Yo and Yo report?
One thing I was looking at, Chris, we have two 2019 settlement reports from the city of Elma. And everything on that seems to be the same except the figures, do you know what these represent? The pages you got up there now, that's one of them.
Yep.
I saw that, too.
These are some reports that the auditors ran in order to help tie out some of the numbers in the, in the spreadsheet above. It would take me several minutes to relearn them.
You could let us know further on that later.
It's a, it's a report that comes from the treasurer's database. Terry Ball would be a better person to ask.
So I'll leave a question mark on them.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, we'll go on to Chris, I'll let you talk about the drain, the drains assessment.
Yeah, no problem. We received notice from the drain commissioner that there is another assessment that is going out, it's for drain 218. If the board chooses, it can be prepaid by February 19th, which is three days from now. The prepayment amount for that is $55,100, or $55,100. The prepayment amount for that is fifty-five thousand dollars, one hundred, or fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents. This is not budgeted. If you'll remember, in December, that you, the board decided to prepay the drain assessment for seventy-nine thousand, which ended up saving in the long run, I, I believe it was approximately twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars in interest. If this one were to be prepaid from our fund balance over the next fifteen years, it'd save fifteen thousand dollars, so a thousand dollars a year in interest, obviously be higher in the beginning and lower at the end, but essentially. Um, I just thought I would bring this out for discussion.
Do we have the money in the general funds to, to do this, to pay it off?
Well, as of January thirtieth, we had four point six million dollars, but, um, this is for general discussion, I'm not going to recommend either way, um.
How do, how does the board feel about it? Personally, I feel that if we pay for it, we shouldn't save fifteen thousand, or just about fifteen thousand.
Well, what's the?
About a twenty-eight percent discount there, I mean, it's it's a big number, we have the cash, we're not making that kind of money on it now.
Chris, the fourteen thousand represents what's the interest rate on it, dude? It'd be more than, more than what we're making on the money, I'm assuming.
Yeah, in fifteen years, you won't make fourteen grand on fifty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
I'll need a second to look that up, I have enough folded, that, uh.
About thirty percent, I was just figuring out here. Sixteen-five, so it's about, it's probably twenty-eight percent.
Well, on fifty-five thousand, if we're making one percent, and we'd be good, we're getting even that, uh, would be what, five hundred and fifty dollars a year?
I'm estimating, I don't see a percentage, I just see an interest payment, but it looks like it's about three percent. But it's over fifteen years, and that's why it adds up to that much.
Do we have to take it over fifteen years, can it be less years?
No, because the Drain Commissioner is going to issue this debt for everybody in the county. We would be a part of it.
This is just our part of it.
That's correct, ten percent.
Yeah. I would make a motion. Well, I guess we, we can't.
We'll have to recommend it to the full board, we can either do it tonight or to the next meeting, next.
It has to be done by the nineteenth.
By the nineteenth, I'm sorry, it has to be done tonight, so. Well, um, I think that's the last thing, uh, you know, it's our last thing, so, um, how do you feel about it, Mr. Bailey?
I agree, I think we should pay it.
Um, Mr. Smith, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I think we should pay it, we're not getting anything on the money now, we're at four million dollars, and.
No. To me, it's not a brainer, it's just pay it.
Yeah, I think if we have the money, pay it, and be done with it, and not have to worry about it. Okay, um, is there, is there any other questions about the finance meetings? Okay, then I will make a motion that we, uh, close the finance meeting.
You can't make a motion, Jan, I'll make the motion that we move back to the general meeting.
I'll second it.
And ask clerk to call the roll.
I asked the clerk to call the, the roll, roll call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, so we're back in regular session. And I believe we would, uh, need a motion if we want to prepay this, uh, drain bill.
I'd make that motion, we'll need a couple of them, one to pay the regular bills too, so.
Right, right.
Drain bill, yeah. I support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Smith, support from Commissioner Bailey. Uh, any discussion on this matter, this is to, uh, uh, prepay the fifty-five thousand assessment on this drain, saving the interest.
And making a budget amendment from gen, or from fund balance?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Did you hear that, Angie?
I got it.
Okay.
That, that's what Angie heard.
Who is, oh, yeah, I got it, Sam and Bailey.
Yeah, no discussion, uh, then, uh, I asked the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. All right, then, uh, the only other matter I see here is, uh, to approve the, uh, financial report.
To pay the bills.
Pay the bills. Well, we're, actually, the most of them have been paid, we're actually hoping to approve it. I'll move. Motion by Commissioner, uh, Smith, second by Commissioner Lumberman. Uh, if there's no discussion, then I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bailey.
Mr. La.
Commissioner. I, I believe that, um, he's had, you know, a circumstance, so I think he's had something come up and had to leave.
Commissioner Bailey, Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Then, uh, I believe we've gone through our, uh, agenda, uh, without objection, uh, I have it adjourned.